Good evening, everyone. I have 6:00 PM the posted time for tonight's meeting of the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'll call the meeting in order. Madam Chair, do we have a quorum?
Yes, sir. We have a quorum.
At this time, I'll recognize Mr. Steve Patton, who's going to lead us in the pledge and then deliver our application.
We rise and face the flag and join in the praise of the leaders.
I pray to the leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me in prayer, please. Father, we thank you for allowing us to be part of the freedom in this country. Thank you for everything that we have been blessed with in the United States of America. And especially, we thank you for the fact that we are citizens of Cleveland County and the special blessings that we receive by being those citizens. Tonight, we pray for wisdom and guidance and proper decision-making for our leaders, and we trust you to lead it in God and direct them as you would have it be done. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Next, we'll recognize any elected officials that we have present tonight.
Mr. Martin, please.
Alvin, please share thoughts.
Andy Glenn, please.
True board.
Next, and I'll ask Commissioners Hudson to help with this. Next, we'll recognize any veterans that are present.
Jason Paul, United States Air Force.
Steve Patton, U.S. Army.
Tony Hett, U.S. Army. You guys already got beaten, right?
Appreciate you.
Next item, we'll recognize any law enforcement present tonight.
Dan Howard, Cleveland County Sheriff's Office.
Helen Wilton, Sheriff's Office.
Next, we'll recognize any county department heads.
Erica Melton, Assistant County Director.
Tiffany Hansen, Health Department.
Allison Moon, Human Resources.
Katie Swanson, Social Services.
Chris Morgan, Clay.
Jason Paul, Business and Health Director.
I'm Logan Knight.
I'm John, you may.
Thank you all. Next, first item on the agenda is the motion to adopt the proposed agenda. Commissioners, you presented the agenda. I'll entertain any motion to approve or amend the agenda as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to amend the agenda by removing Consent Item G, Planning Case 23-05. Request to set public hearing for Tuesday, May the 2nd, 2023. Request to rezone property at 410 Davis Road from residential to neighborhood business conditional use.
Thank you. We have a motion to amend the posted agenda by removing Item G from the consent agenda. Do we have a second? Are there any questions or discussion? Here, not all is favorable, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed will say no. Motion carries anonymous. Next item on the agenda is a special recognition. At this time, I recognize Katie Swanson, our Social Service Director, to come forward. She's going to talk about National Childcare or Child Abuse Awareness Month 2023. Katie?
Yeah, you talk. Okay, sorry. I thought the proclamation was first. Sorry. So, thank you for having me tonight. Child abuse awareness obviously is very dear to my heart. It's an important time to remind our citizens that we should report suspicion of abuse, neglect, or dependency to your local child welfare, which would be DSS. And the reason this is important is you can save lives and have an impact on the safety and well-being of a child. And so, just a reminder to all of our citizens that all citizens in North Carolina are mandated reporters. And all you have to do is have a suspicion, and you also can remain anonymous if you choose. And so, we want to really take a moment to honor the children that we serve in the community. And you're going to hear in a minute through the proclamation, that's over 1,900 children and reports. And so, I do want to take one second, if you don't mind, to recognize the few DSS staff that are here tonight. A couple of my leadership team, as well as one of our social workers. If you guys don't mind, stand for one quick second. I appreciate that. We thank you for everything you do. And thank you all for support that you give DSS. Appreciate that.
Child Abuse Prevention Month 2023. Whereas all children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, they are also the most vulnerable members of society. And whereas the problem of child abuse and neglect affects many of Cleveland County's children and has reached epidemic proportions in North Carolina, with over 99,500 children reported abused, neglected, or dependent last year. Sorry, my eyes watering. Whereas last year, Cleveland County Department of Social Services had over 1,900 children reported abused, neglected, or dependent. And whereas preventing child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility that affects both the current and future quality of life of our community. And whereas affected child abuse strategies succeed because of the partnerships created among individuals and families, human services agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and business communities. And whereas every child has a right to a safe, healthy, nurturing environment, and community action is needed to help prevent child abuse, so all children can have the opportunity to reach their potential, we call upon the community to increase our participation efforts to support families, thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim the month of April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and calls upon every citizen to join the child protection organizations, groups, and individuals in observance of the month with the appropriate education and prevention of child abuse. Adopted this the 4th day of April 2023.
Thank you.
Will anyone stand behind them, maybe?
Yes.
Yeah, y'all need to come down here. All right. Okay.
Okay.
Let's do this.
Yeah, we always need help.
Stay right here.
Tall girls at the back. Yeah, tall girls at the back.
Seriously?
I can't say she's right. I know you're not a lot, right?
I haven't covered Johnny yet.
Okay.
No, you haven't, Johnny. Back a little.
All right, Johnny.
Get a little closer to him.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is citizen recognition. Madam Kirk, will you read that? And then we'll take our speaker for tonight.
Citizen recognition portion of a Board of Commissioners meeting is an opportunity for persons wishing to appear before the Board to do so. Each presentation will be limited to three minutes. In the event a group of persons supporting or opposing the same position, desire to be heard, the Board chair may require the group to designate a spokesperson for the group. Speakers may not yield their time to other speakers. Speakers must discuss only items within the jurisdiction of the Board of Commissioners. While speakers are free to discuss county employees and officials, the Board requests that speakers be courteous and respectful in their comments. Speakers are prohibited from using profanity or making threats of violence or personal attacks against any person. The Board is interested in hearing citizen concerns. Yet speakers should not expect comment, action, or deliberation on subject matter brought up during the portion of a meeting. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate county agency.
Thank you. At this time, Mr. Williams?
My name's Robert Williams, 814 East Hedges Coats Trail in Faust. At our last meeting during citizen participation, we had three women on King's Road talk about their being terrorized by vicious dogs, bitten by dogs, and other people bitten by dogs. All three of them said that law enforcement had been called and helped the animal control also, and they did nothing. And all that concerned me. I look back in the sunshine package, I guess what you call it, for the minutes of the last meeting, and I was pleasantly surprised that what these women said were pretty well summarized, sometimes a little bit too much summarized. They didn't, the minutes didn't say that these women said that nothing was done. Now, at the end of the minutes, there was a statement, the minutes of what they said, there was a statement that some agency, somebody had been told to do something, but it didn't say what. My thought was, well, is this just another way of saying, do nothing, just in other words? I don't know what happened. And I'm a citizen, and I remember the days when dog bites were dangerous things, and they still are. I'd like to know, and I think the people of Cleveland County would like to know, just what happened and what they outdid. I mean, did this woman have to go through rabies shots? I understand they cost $40,000. So, anyway, it's one thing. The Health Department scorecard, it's going to be talked about later. I looked through that thing. I've looked through those things before. I think probably it's just something that you have to do, and it goes in a drawer somewhere and never looked at again until the next year. But anyway, my conclusion of looking through that is Cleveland County is not a healthy place. The mortality rates, they had, toward the end of the report, it listed 1 through 10 of the highest mortality rates in Cleveland County and the state. Comparison, like, but they didn't compare. If you go down through Cleveland County and then go down through the state, they didn't always match up. You were, it looked like you were comparing apples to oranges. For instance, number nine on the county mortality rates was COVID-19. It was not on the state listed at all. So how do we compare Cleveland County with North Carolina? Other things, there were things that were high mortality in Cleveland County. They were not the same in the state. Some of them were not even on the same list. So, it was, I don't know, just not easily determined just what the situation really is.
Can you wrap it up, please?
Well, I'm glad I stayed my conclusion first. Cleveland County is not a healthy place. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Senate agenda. At this time, I'll recognize our Head of County Manager, Todd Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to everybody tonight. Yes, the consent agenda, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the March 21st, 2023 Regular Commissioners Meeting. Second item on consent is a Finance Department Budget Transfer Summary, as required by North Carolina General Statute 15915. All internal transfers shall be submitted to the Board of Commissioners. The Budget Transfer Summary from March 14th, 2023 through March 23rd, 2023 is included in the Commissioners' packets. Next item is Register of Deeds, a budget amendment. This is the budget allocation for $4,332 in grant monies received from the North Carolina Office of the Governor and a donation from the Historic Shelby Foundation. These funds will be used to book preservation. Next item is Sheriff's Office Budget Amendment. This budget allocation is for $4,600 in donated funds received to date to be used for the Star Summer Camp expenses. Next item, Health Department Budget Amendment. This budget allocation is for $20,000 in grant funds from Contegra to partner with them to address opioid disorder and overdoses in Cleveland County through Health Resources and Service Administration's Rural Communities Opioid Response Grant. These funds will be used to support and purchase and distribution of Narcan to first responders and community partners. The next item is the Finance Department Risk Management Property Liability Budget Amendment. This is a budget allocation for $50,000 for insurance proceeds to cover vehicle repairs. The last item on the consent agenda is Planning Case 2306. It's a request to set a hearing for Tuesday, May 2nd, a public hearing for Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023, to request to rezone property at 1129 Cherrville Road from neighborhood business to general business. The applicant is requesting to rezone parcel 62086 from neighborhood business to general business. This is 2.57 acres and located at 1129 Cherrville Road in Shelby. Property is currently zoned neighborhood business, and the requesting zoning district is general business. Surrounding zoning is a mix of neighborhood business, general business, residential restricted, residential, and R20 residential. The property also falls within the highway corridor. Surrounding uses include single-family dwellings along with various commercial projects along Cherrville Road. The land use plan calls this area future primary growth. And that ends the consent agenda for tonight. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, sir. Board, we've been presented with the consent agenda. Is there any discussion?
If there's no discussion, I make a motion to accept it.
Second.
All right, motion second. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed will say no. Motion carries anonymous. Next, we're down to the regular agenda. First one is the State of Cleveland County Health, or County Health Report and National Public Health Week 2023. At this time, I'll recognize Tiffany Hansen, the Health Department Director.
Hello, everyone, and thank you for having me. Yes, tonight I'm going to be talking about our 2022 State of the County Health Report. So a little bit of background on data collection at the Health Department. This is outlined as part of General Statute according to our accreditation guidelines. So every four years, we complete a community health assessment. That's really our foundation. Then we create what's called a Community Health Improvement Plan. And then years that we don't do a community health assessment, we do what's called a State of the County Health Report, or now it's called a scorecard. So you'll hear those terms universally. So a little bit about our community health assessment. This is our most comprehensive dataset. So it's conducted every four years. We utilize both primary, secondary datasets. We survey the community. And we really are looking for identifying factors impacting the community, available resources to address those factors, and then really provide a discussion platform. So we invite over 80 community partners to a number of different things, really to address what happens here and what are our priorities. So the community health assessment helps us set up for this, which is our community health improvement plans. So based on our community health assessment, we identify two, at least two health priorities, also outlined in General Statute for our accreditation guidelines. Each chip, it has to be related to a 2030 North Carolina Health Indicator, so we have to make sure we make that connection. And then really, we use results-based accountability for these. So what do we want to see? And that's how we base our community health improvement plans. So lastly, in this process is the State of the County Health Report. And so this is conducted every year that we do not do a comprehensive community health assessment. And this is now called Scorecard. As I mentioned before, it has both county-specific data and state-specific measurements, because it has also the North Carolina Health Indicators 2030. And really, for these, we're looking for how much did we do? How well did it work? Did it impact anyone? Is anyone better off, based on those strategies that we identified? So, in this process, before I move on, I really want to point out one thing and give accolades to our team. So we are one of six health departments across the state that has been recognized for outstanding community health assessments, community health improvement plans, and State of the County Health Rankings. And so it just goes to show really the hard work that our team at the Health Department does to support these documents, as well as all of our community participants and all the data collection that goes into formulating those. So priority areas identified as part of the 2019 Community Health Assessment was tobacco utilization and cessation, as well as teen births. Strategies that were identified as part of those community health improvement plans to address tobacco in particular were comprehensive tobacco messaging, and so really working on the education and prevention standpoint, options for tobacco cessation programming, and making sure our citizens and community have the ability to get access to those, should they elect to do. And then as well as episodic programming. So we have a health education team that deploys out in partnership with Atrium and other community partners, as requested, to provide programming. Partners that we utilize for these particular things, obviously, is our Public Health Board, our Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, Atrium Health, and North Carolina Tobacco Prevention Control Branch. This is one of the graphs that you'll see as part of the report in your packet, and this is Cleveland County-specific data, really pulled from our county health rankings. And so this is from 2022. You'll see as we started 2019, I think I can get this to work, our numbers were at 21% when we first did the community health assessment, and that flagged us to start addressing that, which is when those strategies got deployed. And we started to see a decline here. And then, my very favorite word, and one we all love, 2020, we had COVID. And so that, of course, caused us to pause many of our programs in public health and caused really an upset across the country. And so, as we have seen now, our numbers have grown. And one of the things we've been working on over the last year, in particular in 2022, is really rekindling those partnerships with Atrium, making sure our community partners knows that we're aware, that we have cessation programming, and really coming back around with our education platforms. One of the things that we also believe is causing some of our increases in the adult side, because, of course, these children get older, is our youth tobacco rates. And so as you can see, from 2019 to 2021, when we did our Area Pride Survey, which is conducted in Cleveland County Schools in 6th, 9th, and 12th grade, we had a substantial increase in our youth tobacco utilization rates. And so that's also something that we're working to target as part of these, utilizing similar strategies, but of course adolescent-focused. So early intervention and diversion programming if students are in violation of the school's tobacco-free policies. So making sure that we educate them about impacts and what that looks like in the long term for them. Comprehensive tobacco messaging geared at youth in particular, as well as working with school nurses for any age-appropriate cessation programming if students need those assets and resources. We have a number of community partners here, but most predominantly impacting this, of course, is Cleveland County Schools. Teen births, as I mentioned, is our second priority area that was identified as part of that 2019 Community Health Assessment. And so with this, similar, because public health really focuses on education and prevention, is delivering reproductive health and educational programming to students and adults, making sure that we have the opportunity to do episodic education as well. We partner with Cleveland County Schools in order to deliver curriculum here. We also maintain a number of coalitions that work on this, one being our Teen Pregnancy Prevention Coalition. So that has a number of community partners representing lots of different sectors, the schools, OB-GYN, women's health. We have a couple of our strong Teens Youth Council members that are present on that as well. And that group meets quarterly in order to continue to engage around really new strategies, ways that we can connect better, ways that we can share methods better in communication, as well as different media platforms that we can deploy. So with this one, we have been working on this at the Health Department since 2009, I believe is when it first surfaced in our community health assessment as something that we needed to focus on as a priority area. And as you can see, based on this graph, which this is Cleveland County-specific data, that over time since 2016, we have seen a pretty dramatic decrease in our numbers here. However, I will point out that this 32 is still elevated based on North Carolina averages and national averages. So it's still made the priority list for this four-year cycle, and then we'll evaluate it again this year when we do the 2023 Community Health Assessment. And then lastly on my list, and this is really perfect timing, that I'm doing the State of the County Health Ranking, is really to give kudos to our team. They are incredible. They make all of these things come to life. And they do a wonderful job. They're extremely passionate about the community and the services they provide. And so really, huge accolades to them and the work that they do every single day.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments?
I guess I got a question and a comment, too, back when we first started looking at the health of the county. We started to telemedicine in the schools. And I understand that that's been expanded.
Mm-hmm.
And also, we're looking at Adrian doing a clinical bus. Could you elaborate on those, too?
Yeah, so I can speak a little bit. So Atrium, of course, does telemedicine in partnership with us in Cleveland County Schools. And over the last two years have worked to expand to all of the sites that they weren't currently covering. So all of the elementary school have telemedicine via Atrium, which really is a telepresenter that gets deployed out to the schools to connect students to a provider. So then ideally, it reduces absenteeism, sick days, things like that. So it's worked wonderfully. Atrium is also working to deploy a mobile primary care unit in partnership, I think for Cleveland, it's at Washington Missionary Outreach. And so that bus will be there on Wednesdays in order to provide primary care access as well.
I've got a question. The tobacco use in the youth, is vaping including in that, or is that in addition to?
No, it is included in there, which is a large part contributing to that increase, is vaping and e-cigarette utilization. Yes.
Anybody else? All right, I believe at this time we have the proclamation.
Yes, sir. National Public Health Week 2023. Whereas the week of April 3rd through the 9th, 2023, is National Public Health Week, showcasing the theme of centering and celebrating cultures and health, recognizing the contributions of improving the health of the people and achieving health equity. And whereas many of the leading causes of death for individuals in the United States result from chronic conditions, which are among the most common, costly, and preventable of all health challenges. And whereas there are significant differences in the health status of individuals living in the healthiest states and those living in the least healthy states, including differences in obesity rates, the prevalence of chronic disease, and the prevalence of infectious disease. And whereas each 10% increase in local public health spending contributes to a 6.9% decrease in infant deaths, 3.2% decrease in deaths related to cardiovascular disease, 1.4% decrease in deaths due to diabetes, 1.1% decrease in cancer-related deaths. Whereas efforts to adequately support public health and the prevention of disease and injury can continue to transform a health system focused on treating illness into a healthy system focused on preventing disease and injury and promoting wellness. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 3rd through the 9th, 2023, as National Public Health Week in Cleveland County, and supports the goals and ideals of National Public Health Week by centering and celebrating cultures and health. Adopted this the 4th day of April 2023.
I don't have any staff with me, I may only. Yes.
Do you like Katie on the show?
I don't, they haven't made it. Thank you.
Thank you for going home.
Yes, thank you for going home, I really.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the opioid settlement agreement, Mark.
Good evening. So, y'all remember about two years ago, we entered, y'all entered into an MOU for the first opioid settlement with the big three drug companies, plus Johnson &amp; Johnson. And through that agreement, or following that agreement, we discovered that the share that Cleveland County was going to receive from that first wave was going to be 18, I'm sorry, $7.2 million to be paid over 18 years. We've, those funds have begun to come in. The health department is monitoring that and is working on the opioid remediation activities that they are designated for. There's certain activities that they can be used for through the MOU. Fortunately, in North Carolina, 85% of the settlement funds that were coming to North Carolina from this national settlement were being paid directly to the counties and allocated based on the need from the opioid concerns. And, and so, so as that money is coming in, Tiffany Hansen, through the health department, is implementing and developing programs and partnerships. And I think she's going to have a great report for you later this summer about where things are as they're developing that. Well, now, we are thrilled that, from a national perspective, there has been a settlement on the second wave. And these are the pharmacies, not the manufacturers, which was the first wave. And so, these pharmacies, CVS, Walgreens, Walmart, Allergan, and Teva, and I don't think either of those have a presence here in Cleveland County, or maybe even in North Carolina at all, but all the rest. So, this wave-two settlements are going to be in addition to what we've already received, or agreed to receive. And it's also going to be paid over a number of years. It's going to be a 15-year payout. However, Walmart is paying most of their funds upfront. So, we'll get those, a bigger portion in the first year. And it's going to result in just over $5.7 million to be paid over 15 years, all told. So, the total amount that Cleveland County is going to receive from these two waves of settlement funds is just shy of $13 million. And the funds that are coming in the second wave are still controlled by that MOU that y'all entered into two years ago. The uses they can be for the programming is the same. They can go into the same fund through the finance department, or through finance. I think Tiffany's structuring that as well from that end. So, we're very excited to be able to bring this to you and seek a resolution from you to allow Todd Carpenter, as the interim county manager, to sign the supplemental agreement for these additional funds. And we anticipate the first payment will come in the latter half of 2023. So, it'd be the next fiscal year, but, but in the fall, probably in the fall is when we'll see that first amount come in. So, I'm here tonight to ask that you do adopt the resolution and allow Todd Carpenter to sign, to sign off on that agreement for those additional funds.
Thank you, Mark. More, are there any questions or comments?
It's been a long time coming. I'd like it to like us somewhat. If I was making a motion, if we do the resolution, we give the county manager the authority to sign off on the agreement.
I'll second.
Motion second, any other discussion? Here, none, all this, verbal say aye. Those opposed will say no. All right, your carriage analysis. Mark, I think you have the next one as well. The next one is Pinnacle Classical Academy.
Yes, thank you. So, Pinnacle Classical Academy, as you know, is a tuition-free charter school that's been here in Cleveland County for 10 years. So, they've just celebrated their 10-years anniversary. And in December of 2012, this, this body chose to deed property to Pinnacle. I think it was part of the Hallelujah Acres land, and it was a little over 50 acres. And they built a school on that property. I think it was completed in 2017. And the, the discussion at that time, and the motion that went in, that went in for that was the county would deed the property to Pinnacle Classical Academy upon the receipt of their charter from the state. And if within 15 years, Pinnacle ceased to operate as a charter school, the county would be repaid $325,000, which I believe was determined to be the fair market value of that property. And in the meantime, it would be secured by a deed of trust on the property in favor of the county, with the deed of trust being subordinated to the USDA loan that Pinnacle received at that time. And that loan was for $13 million, which was to help them build that school. As you know, the school was built. It's been very successful. Some information about it is the property is now valued at 16 million at this point. And they are prepared to start a second phase of construction that's going to cost about $15 million. And it's to increase classroom size, increase the size of the gymnasium. I think are the main two focuses there. And let's see, they have 114 employees, which I think is much higher than what was originally anticipated 10 years ago. The students they have enrolled this calendar year is 1,134. They have just done their lottery, and they're expecting 1,225 in the fall. So, it continues to grow. I think it's thriving. I believe it's a school that the whole county is proud of, and as this board is fully aware. So, they are asking us today for the county to do something with this deed of trust. And there's two options. Because there's a new USDA loan coming in, and a closing is anticipated at the end of this week, they need for the county to either agree that the $325,000 that is still secured for another five years, because there's a 15-year from the time the school started through 2028, to subordinate that deed of trust for the next five years, assuming that the charter school will continue to be in business, or if it fails, subordinate to the second USDA loan. So, the first one is 15 million, the second, no, the first one is 13 million, the second is 15 million. So, there's $28 million ahead of the $325,000 value of the property that would be available to the county. So, all of that would have to be repaid before the county could get to their funding. The other option would be for this body to decide to release that deed of trust, which would be basically changing what you decided back in 2012, that you would hold it for 15 years, and if it ceased to be a charter school, it would be due back, and you would release it in 2028 if the school was still thriving. So, the question before this body is, do you want to be subordinated to that $28 million? Or would you consider releasing that deed of trust at this time?
May I make a comment?
Yeah, what questions, what questions or comments do you have?
It wasn't quite, like you said, we gave them the property. What it was, is Hallelujah Acres had a grant. Hallelujah Acres did not fulfill their grant. So, Hallelujah Acres said, we will take the grant and be responsible for it if you deed it over to us. So, that's how it come about, that it was on for 15 years. And that grant still is there for another five years. Even though we may not get nothing out of it, I feel like that to hold true to what we originally did, that we just go ahead and allow them to borrow the money, and we still keep, I guess, a lien on it if we get anything or not, would be my feeling. But it's up to the board, what the board decides to do. But it wasn't that we just gave them the property. They had to do certain criterias for that grant. Also, there had to be a local bill passed from the state so we could even do it. So, at one time, you know, the county could not give land to the charter school. So, it worked out that we could.
Right.
And I'm glad that we could, but you know, like I say, it's up to the board itself. But I personally would like to see it hang on to the end of the 15 years.
Thank you, Commissioner Hutchins, and I appreciate the clarification, because I know you were the only commissioner involved back in 2012, that you would have a clear recollection of what was going on. I was going off of some minutes that were not, that didn't make it crystal clear to me what exactly had happened.
I'm sure, from what I've understood, some of the people that are on the board that started the school, neither them nor the county commissioners at that time, we had no idea whether it worked or not. So, we needed something there to protect the county. Since the school has done so well, and they're, they're expanding and growing every year, then I feel like that the risk for us to demand continuing to have that lien, I just don't think that it's necessary.
I tend to agree with Ronnie that they've made strides. And I've had grandchildren that attended there, and it's a great school and a great setup. I would be in favor of releasing.
I'm in agreement. I don't see a reason to hold it over their heads. It's obvious they're growing and not going anywhere anytime soon.
So, I think what we're looking for is a motion to authorize the board chair to sign that deed of certificate of satisfaction or subordinate agreement. It sounds like you guys are, the majority's in agreement with the certification of satisfaction.
If everybody's, if everybody's happy, you want to make, or I'll make the motion, you want?
Chairman Gorman, Gordon, that's correct. A resolution that's been drafted would be either, either to allow you to either sign the certificate of satisfaction or an alternate resolution to do a subordination agreement, and whatever necessary documents.
I'll make a motion that we release the deed of trust, or whatever, whatever document we need to.
And authorize Chairman Gorman, Gordon, to sign off on that?
Yes, that'd be my motion.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to second, authorize the board chair to sign the certificate of satisfaction, releasing that subordinate lien on the property. Are there any other questions or discussion? Here, none, all this, the fair will say aye. Those opposed will say no. Guess this unanimous? Four to one, then. All right, next item is the closed session. So, at this, at this time, I entertain a motion for us to go into closed session.
I make a motion to go into closed session per North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811, A5 and A6, to consider a personnel matter and to establish the terms of an employment contract.
We have a motion for closed session?
Second.
We have a second?
Second.
All the fair will say aye. Those opposed will say no. All right, we're in closed session. And we'll...